I will call us to order if that's possible. And I will ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner Kevin Cardle.
Governor, Father, we thank you.
Whoop, try this. We thank you for this opportunity to gather in freedom to discuss the business of the city. We would ask that you guide us tonight and that we conduct ourselves in a way that's pleasing to you. Be with those who are serving overseas in harm's way. Bless our first responders. Be with those who are sick or infirmed. We ask that you look after John Copenhour and his family and bring him to health as soon as possible. We ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Who's the team captain of this group? Huh? Who's the team captain? Yeah, come up here, young man.
Did you get hurt during the competition or was this another time?
Let me have one of those crutches and I'll do it for you. How's that? We're gonna have a little duo here, a little duet. Y'all know the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Good deal. Let's turn around, let's put our hand over our heart, and you all lead off.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, wait a minute, hold on, hold on. Introduce yourself.
I'm Jacob Kirchner.
And how old are you, Jacob Kirchner?
I'm 11.
And you go where?
To Woodlawn Elementary.
I know that. And your favorite subject is?
Um, math.
Math. Then your name?
Banks Dunn.
Okay. And how old are you, sir?
I'm 11.
11. And your favorite subject?
Is science.
Science, math and science, there you are. You wanna know what mine was?
Uh, yeah.
Recession.
At lunch.
Well, lunch sometimes.
Can he still fail?
We have a little something for you. We thank you for coming up and gracing us with your presence. Commissioner Atkins, don't haze the people. Don't haze them. Yeah, really.
I can tell what you all have done is very impressive because you had to write so small to get all your accomplishments on this one sheet of paper for the proclamation. I can't even read that, I don't know.
Kylie, where are you? You wanna bring up whomever you wish to bring? Or you can go solo. No, no, more than merrier. Probably everybody lined up right around the front there. We'll do a photo in a moment. I have this lengthy proclamation to read. Good thing I got my new glasses on. Whereas Woodlawn Elementary School's academic team had an outstanding year representing Boyle County Schools and the community, the City Commission would like to congratulate them on their many accomplishments. And whereas Woodlawn Elementary School Academic Team won the District Governors' Cup in February of 2019, also winning first place in Quick Recall, second place in Future Problem Solvers with several students placing in individual tested events. Banks Dunn, first in science, fifth in math. Blake Godby, fourth in social studies. Bill Griffey, fifth in science. Luke Hammond, second in science. Abigail Heath, first in written composition. Jacob Kirchner, first in math and language arts. Jada Maples, fourth in arts and humanities. Jake Preston, first in social studies and second in math. And Natalie Spencer, second in written composition. And whereas the Woodlawn Elementary School Academic Team went on to compete in the Governors' Cup, Region 23 competition on March the 2nd at host school Woodlawn Elementary, and won the Regional Governors' Cup, also winning Quick Recall and Future Problem Solvers team divisions, with individual awards going to Banks Dunn, second in math, and fourth in science. Blake Godby, fifth in social studies. Luke Hammond, second in science. Abigail Heath, first in written composition. Jacob Kirchner, third in math, and second in language arts. Jada Maples, second in arts and humanities. And Jake Preston, second in social studies. I should've had you all raise your hand when you... Kinda be like whack-a-mole, you know? Now, I am gonna ask you to raise your hand. Whereas team members include Caleb Branham, Clara Cooley. There you go. Nice, young lady. Banks Dunn. There you go. Blake Godby. Luke Hammond. Anybody got a green shirt, come up here. Casey Karchner. Jacob Kirchner. Aleah Lamar. Jerry Lynn. Jada Maples. Jake Preston. Forgive me if I mispronounce this. Kate Breezy? It doesn't matter, does it? Abigail Heath. Emily Lavender. And Nicholas Powell, along with coaches Savannah Workman, Kylie Cooper, and Anna Collins, are outstanding role models to the youth of Boyle and Dambel. All of the members are applauded for their exemplary attitude and contributions to education. And whereas Woodlawn Elementary School Academic Team members are shining examples of focus and dedication to be the best they can be as a team, coming together to accomplish great things, they are to be commended. Now therefore Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City Commissioners of the City of Dambel on this 11th day of March 2019, do hereby congratulate the Woodlawn Elementary School Academic Team on their outstanding accomplishments and encourage the citizens of Dambel to congratulate them on their success and representation of Dambel, Kentucky and Boyle County. Let's give them a round of applause. Here, coaches, that's for you all. Let's let her take a picture. Now, is everyone... Everyone's not in the same grade, are they? Okay. Here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna let you take this, Coach.
Okay.
Have at it. Say whatever you wish to say about that.
Okay. Well, we have a great team of 5th graders and we're sad to see you guys go, but we know you'll do great things at the middle school. And we're excited for our 4th graders who can hopefully join us again next year. We're so proud of you guys and all your hard work. You guys are so smart, but you are also incredible people and we are so proud of you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
No, thank you all, and congratulations. Who's got... Everybody got some pens?
We've got some pens.
I'll let you attack them. Go right ahead.
Do I get to stick certain ones? Leave it in the neighborhood?
Thank you, class dismissed.
Y'all are welcome to stay.
They don't want to.
What? Outstanding civics class, right here.
I can't believe they don't want to stay.
They're gonna miss...
Do they have a civics category? This would be a civic lesson.
They're gonna be... They're gonna miss cake. The door prize.
I need to back up a moment and ask the Commission if this agenda meets your approval. I'm assuming it does, seeing how I skipped right over it.
Do you have a couple of changes? We have some stuff in front of us you want to mention?
We also skipped Hear the Public.
Yes. Yes, we do. We need to back up and do Hear the Public.
No. On the agenda, you have some additions in front of us. I think we ought to make those known. Is that right?
Well, we're talking about...
You have a recommendation here for Parks and Rec?
We have a recommendation for a joint appointment to the Parks and Rec Board.
Okay.
This is just the City Manager's report. It's just the City Manager's report.
Yeah, City Manager's report will not have any PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. I just wanted to get it correct. Thanks, Mayor.
There you are. So, we're in that section called Hear the Public. This is your opportunity to take three minutes at the microphone on any subject that is on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move right ahead.
We need to accept it.
Yes, please, go ahead and make the motion.
I move that we accept the proclamation for the Woodlawn Governors' Cup Regional Champions.
Thank you, ma'am. Second?
Second.
Thirds.
And thirds. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item two is the banner request, Rotary International Dinner. Ms. Becker, I don't think you need to come here. I'm just gonna ask the question. This meets with staff's approval, as we've always done this. Any questions from the Commission? Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval of the banner request.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, ma'am. You can go home, too.
No, I don't wanna go home.
We have a programming update from Parks and Recreation. Ms. Amber, glad to have you.
I think you had us first and second. We didn't vote on that.
I'll see, I'm rolling.
Yeah.
It must be the caffeine. Let's have a motion.
We did.
We got the motion.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Now we have you, thank you.
Okay. I am just here to kinda give a program update for what has been going on at Parks at Rec. Wanted to let you all know that we had scheduled... We're wrapping up youth basketball right now, and we had scheduled over 293 games this year, which this is the most participants that we've had in both basketball and cheerleading in three years. So, we're really proud of that. Tonight is the last night for basketball. The tournament's at KSD. There's three championship games. And then our cheerleading exhibition is this Thursday at Tolliver. So, the cheerleaders are really excited about that. There's been about over 50 cheerleaders this year. So, we were glad that that number had grown a whole lot. As for summer prep, we've got DCA, Dambel, and BAY calling Millennium Home. There's a game there tomorrow night. That's the first game of the season. We're starting to get soccer fields ready. Practices have started, and the games begin within the next couple of weeks. Harold and Evan have been working hard on those. They were out there all day today, working on them, since we finally had no rain. We're extending day camp hours this summer. We're gonna do 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The wellness center's not gonna have theirs, so we thought we would try to help out the kids in the community if they need an extra place to go and just work those hours in a little bit more. We think that it'll be great. It's a good idea, and the staff that I have prepared for it are excited for it. This summer, we are hosting an arts festival in the park. It'll be the first one that has been there, so we're anxious to see how that goes. We're gonna start T-ball, softball, and baseball signups March 26 through April. It's gonna be mid to late April. And then we'll start putting the teams together, and practices will begin about the middle of May, and then games will start in June. And then as for the fitness center, we have 80 students in dance this year. We had over 1,100 check-ins for the fitness center. We have 10 people doing karate. Wanted to just let you all know that the racquetball courts on Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, both racquetball courts are usually full with people coming in and playing in those. We've been seeing a lot of people out on the tennis courts lately, so that's been picking up when the weather is nice and it's not raining. And then fitness classes are continually... continuing weekly, and then they're running smoothly as well. So, things are going great from programming standpoint. So, thank you.
Thank you for that report.
How's John?
He is doing well. He's still pretty sedated. The doctors are all positive. His family's very positive. I got to go up and see yesterday and spend a couple hours up there with them. So, keep him in your prayers, keep all of his family in your prayers, 'cause he's definitely defying the odds right now, so.
And I wanna say thank you, 'cause I understand that you and others are picking up a lot of slack right now and moving right along, and that's commendable. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Amber, one... Just FYI, since I don't have any kids in the...
I'm not much of a public speaker, so as soon as I go sit down...
Well, this is an easy question. How many venues do you play basketball in, considered a rec league?
We played at Jenny Rogers this year. We've normally played at Hogsitt, but they're out of commission right now. We played at Tolliver. We have practices at Woodlawn. We play at Parable, and then at KSD.
So, spread out in five different locations.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And we use up as much time as we can at all of those gyms. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item four is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which was February 25th.
I'll for motion for approval of the February 25, 2019 minutes as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Second, my Commissioner Cardle. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item five is the recommendation to approve an amendment to the joint zoning ordinance. Mr. Scott, anything on this you want to address?
No, sir. I will yield to our planning and zoning director.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a pretty lengthy packet there, but it's... I'll explain what's happening here, and then walk you through a few pieces of this fairly quickly, but there's a lot there, and there's a lot of moving pieces, and I'll just tell you kinda what's happening. So, again, you heard the mayor say, this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, and actually, it's a full-blown rewrite is what we're doing. And before we get into zoning, so I'll just mention, you know, there's three documents that the Planning Commission has. We have a comprehensive plan. You guys know that was passed in 17. And then we tweaked it in June of 18, when we amended Chapter 9, and then we did the goals and objectives, Chapter 1, this past November. The subdivision regs are other document that regulates subdivisions and streets and sidewalks. That was completely revised in June of last year. We got one chapter to tweak. And so, you know, things are kinda slow, and being what they are, we said, let's get into the zoning ordinance. There's a lot of little things that can be fixed, can be addressed, so we just took it on and said, let's just take this thing from start to finish in-house and rewrite the whole book. So, let me tell you first why we're amending it, 'cause there's a couple of things I think are important. Number one's, we want to reorganize the whole book. Had a developer call me last week, good example, and it's a fairly easy project, and when you're talking to them about the zoning ordinance, you gotta go to five for uses, four for site plans. Parking, another chapter. Landscape, another chapter. The zone change in Chapter 18. So, we have 18 chapters right now, spread out, that were written in 2004 with some amendments. And one of the reasons we wanna do is reorganize the book. Put everything in... We're gonna put these into seven chapters, so we're gonna go from 18 chapters into seven. We're gonna put a lot of new pieces into this book. We want it to be a better... My note here is a better readability. So, as you guys can see, you saw the cross-through text in the back. You can see the font, and you can see the style, and then you can kinda see the way we're using the underlying text. And it looks messy, 'cause it's all underlined and striked through, but again, we're using fonts that make more sense on the web and on your phone. You know, we're just trying to make the book look better, read better, and present itself better. We're also trying to modernize it with all the terms and techniques and processes that we didn't have in 2004 that are now new today. And then we want to get all the standards looked at and the things that we know. For example, one specifically, it's not in this first phase, rear setbacks. We still got standards that reference the 1960s and 70s, and the way we do rear setbacks in most of the country now are very different. So, let me tell you what you got in front of you. Then this gets a little complicated. We broke this up into two phases. So, Phase 1 is Chapters 1, 2, 3, and 6. It's the easy stuff. It's the cookie cutter stuff. It's most of the stuff that was in the old book, just reorganized. And it repeals Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 10, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. So, 12 articles get merged into these four that you have right here in front of you.
Great.
And I'm gonna walk you through just a couple of things in there that are different, and I think I need to point out to you guys and maybe get some comments or feedback on that. The second phase is gonna be Chapters 4, a new 4, a new 5, and a 7. And that's where all the uses will go, all the standards, all kinda the what can I do, where. We're kicking around, moving the names back like they used to be from these GRAs and GRBs and NCCs and NCRCs, to back to R1 and R2 and R3, more to that traditional. And I'll give you an example. Had some... A bank called me today that's doing an appraisal on a piece of property, and they said, yeah, I'm looking at a piece of property in your town. It's NCC. What does that mean? And I said, well... And I grabbed my book, and when I explained, I said, well, do you have R3? She said, oh, yeah, I know what R3 is. 'Cause that's universal across the whole country. So, somewhere along 2000, 2004, we adopted all these names, and they look good on paper and they read well, but they're not universally known, and I think it causes confusion out there, especially if you got a developer that's looking at you from Cleveland, Ohio, that's saying, hey, what... They understand what R1, 2, and 3 and 4 means. Try to figure out what NCC, NCR-A, NCR-B, C, or those mean. So, again, we're gonna try to simplify this. That's one of the goals. Another thing I just want to point out real quick, I thought was interesting, and I'll just walk you through the chapters real quick. In 2002, 2004, when this book was adopted, there was hired Gunn that came in here and helped the staff, and at the exact same point in time, I was involved with the rewrite of an ordinance where I was. We hired a consultant out of Austin, Texas, called Duncan Associates. And it was interesting, we were presented with three options, and Louisville was kinda in this mix, too. There's three kinds of zoning ordinance out there kinda on the planet. There's what's called a pyramid ordinance, and there's what's called a forum-based ordinance, which is Louisville's, and theirs is really the only one in the state. And then there's what's called use-based ordinances. Where I was before, we chose to do what's called a use-based ordinance, 'cause it's a little easier to read and easier to understand. And what we have here is historically a pyramid ordinance. And the easiest way to explain it is, what you can do in R1, you can do in R2. And what you could do in R2, you could do in R3. And you just sort of build the uses up the hill. And one of the problems with that is you tend to open up things in areas, and we're gonna have a challenge here, and I'll give you an example. Most of this town was R1 and 2, and it converted to GRA and GRB. What we didn't ever create was a duplex-only district. So, what you've done is, is you created this R2, which allowed single-family and duplex, and even though the whole neighborhood might've been single-family, the potential's there to do a duplex. And if you look at the map of Dambel, a big chunk of the city's zone, GRB, which right now are single-family homes, but if one burned, or someone bought two lots, they could put a duplex on that lot, turn it sideways, and you can imagine all our phones would start ringing. That's the danger of a pyramid ordinance, is you allow these things to go up the hill in R2, R3, R4, and they really aren't specific to a specific neighborhood or specific use. So, what we're gonna do with this rewrite is we're gonna follow the model that I think works, in my opinion, the best, and get away from the pyramid, convert the names, but go to what's a use-based ordinance. So, again, there'll be a duplex-only district. There'll be density-based districts for R3 or R4. There'll maybe be an office professional district that we used to have that we no longer have, that you could see by the name, that, hey, that'll just be offices. It'll never be a McDonald's or a drive-thru. So, I think we're gonna try to get these names back, something that works. The other problem with our ordinance is we created this IBD district. It's our Industrial Business Development District. It's a two-acre minimum district and meant to be this big campus style. So, if tomorrow you wanted to open a mulch business, or let's say you were gonna retread tires or do something small, you can't go out and develop an 8,000-square-foot or quarter-acre lot to do an industrial use. You need two acres, and you got these setbacks that are set to build an industrial park, and not for the guy that just wants to open up a messy old body shop. Right now, there's not a good district. Actually, we pushed that into commercial. Again, because of the pyramid ordinance style, we pushed everything into highway commercial, which I'd also argue, probably on the bypass, is not where we want to maybe see some of these messy, traditional industrial uses. Give them their own district. I think that's gonna be the approach of going to a use-based ordinance. Most of that's coming in Phase 2. This first phase, again, is cookie cutter stuff, and I'm gonna walk you through. We had a hearing. We filed this in January. We had a hearing in January. We tabled it. The city spent a month or so looking at the document. Mr. Dexter's looked at it. We talked back and forth. We reconvened the hearing in last month, and the Planning Commission passes 6 to 0 to forward you guys a recommendation for approval. And again, this would revise these four articles. And I'll walk you through some of this real quick, and hopefully you got your packets. And then if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them as we go through or at any point. Article 1, and one other thing that's neat about this revision, we've renumbered a little bit, but now there's page numbers specific to each chapter, so you see 1-1, 1-2. So, I'll reference those page numbers at the bottom. We'll be in 2-1, 3-1, et cetera, as opposed to one kind of page numbering system. That sounds silly, but when you convert Word documents to PDF and put them on the web, page numbers and computer numbers sometimes don't match. So, as you're talking to people on the phone, you're always referencing these page numbers that may not look like what's on their computer, but will work on the bottom. Really, Article 1's pretty cookie cutter. Our old Article 1 was about one page, and this thing grows a little bit, but it's got one new part. But on 1-2, we added a policy for landlocked policy, or landlocked property. We did not have that in the existing book. That's important in a zoning ordinance to deal with property that's been not, that was never surveyed, doesn't meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and just needs to be moved or conveyed for financial purposes. This now gives us a policy on how to deal with those landlocked parcels and how they can be moved and potentially even cut for just recording purposes only, but in still addressing why they don't meet the zoning ordinance. There's also some transitional provisions right below that. Then when you get on Page 1-3 at the bottom, for the first time in our book, we didn't have this new book, we define all the players of the zoning ordinance. Planning Commission, the Director, the Building Inspector is a key part, the legislative bodies, our AHB, all the folks that are kinda involved in decision-making that goes with land use are now in one place, with their duties and responsibilities and terms if they apply. And that's really, that's all in Article 1 at that point. Article 2 is our definitions, and our old article was definitions. We've taken the kitchen sink approach and put every definition that we could find. And one of the problems with the old book is we had definitions that didn't match the state law. KRS-100, that's our guiding statute, clearly has definitions, just a handful of them, that relate to zoning, and we had some that didn't match those, so they needed to match. And then there's others that we all know that we use in the land use every single day, and I want to point a couple out. On Page 2-2, our definition of agriculture or agricultural use did not match the state definition. This is a very confusing topic. It comes up every day. It came up this morning, in fact. KRS-100 says an agricultural use, or that track is a five-acre track that you live on or grow crops or have animals. And you guys will like this at the end of that. It's a pretty cool first paragraph. I love this. It says, "For this subsection, livestock means cattle, sheep, swine, goats, horses, apacas, llamas, buffaloes, and any other animals of the bovine, ovine, porcine," on and on and on. I don't even know what half those things are, but they're big, and they make a lot of racket, and they go out in the county. But this number B, C, and D, those came in a few years ago. C and D is interesting. These are equestrian or equine-based activities. It can be pretty big and pretty intense. But if you got a five-acre track in the county, for example, number D, you can do by right. And that's an interesting one. It says that you can have lots of people and lots of buildings and stadium lights. It could go on and on and on. But that's agricultural use under the definitions from how ours matches. What's confusing is there's a 10-acre rule that's a tax exemption. There's an agricultural use rule that's our five acre, and people get confused on what the rules are, it's a ten acre or it's five acre, and which one exempts me from taxes, and which one am I allowed by right to do certain things? And then right below that, on two dash three, you see an agritourism definition, this came in in about two thousand and thirteen. Agritourism means a lot of things, and I want to point out some stuff because we haven't decided where this is gonna go and when. But it's important to note that it says agriculture in the middle, agritourism means any activity, that could be recreation, entertainment, and it says not limiting to, and it says the word weddings, and goes on and on. One of the problems you're gonna, we're gonna show you is there's a bed and breakfast definition that says agritourism is a focus of that bed and breakfast. And around the state, there's been bed and breakfasts that have become wedding venues, and music venues, and ATV riding venues, and there's even one that agritourism that's zombie laser tag. And the problem that you run into is when you put these out in the county by right, because they're agritourism, there are certain things that you can imagine neighbors don't like. With ATV riding, some of the wedding venues are great when it's just a small wedding out in the field. And then I'm familiar with one facility called Casey's Cove, where you can order the Skinnerd and fireworks package. And party till two in the morning and shoot fireworks, and you can imagine neighbors have a problem with these wedding venues. So some of these agritourism facilities are not well received. So again, some point in the ordinance in phase two, we're gonna figure out where we're gonna allow these and where we're not gonna allow these. We're gonna allow them in ag, but they're probably gonna need some kind of approval or have some rules with them. You turn the page on two, four, and there's the bed and breakfast rules. This one's important for the city of Danville because historically, I think we all think of bed and breakfasts as quaint little areas, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. But the state now says there's a home, there's an inn, and then again, bed and breakfast farm stay whose focus is that KRS two forty seven agritourism, which means that thing could be anything. You're renting a few rooms, but you're also doing other stuff. It could be a gun club, or again, ATV riding facility. But what's interesting, what they changed in the law is you no longer have to reside at a bed and breakfast to be a legal bed and breakfast, you just have to be on the property or the adjacent property. Those changed in two thousand and thirteen because of a court case in Warren County, I believe. And Representative Jody Richards filed this to deal with some problems in Warren County. And then all of a sudden, we ended up with all these different bed and breakfast categories. The challenge I think we're gonna have in the city here isn't, home is probably fine, and an inn is fine, but I don't think we want bed and breakfast farm stays and incorporated limits. And then how many rooms are gonna be okay before we're overloading the house or we have a parking problem? So again, the figuring out where these bed and breakfasts will go and when will be later. Without that, I'm not gonna say much more on that page until you get to page two dash eight. And these definitions are kind of important, I'm taking some time, so again, you guys may have some comments. We've always had a definition of family, it's about three fourths or midway through the page on two dash eight. I don't know if you guys know this, but the way this works in my everyday zoning world is we have a district called GRA, single family. That means one of these, if you can figure out what these are. And these are, this means anyone that's married, adoption, guardianship, anybody that's a single housekeeping unit, that meets this definition. You know, anyone's related. But then we also allow other people that are either not related or not related and have kids. This number used to be four, and we're bringing it down to three. And I'll tell you why, it it's a challenge to deal with four unrelated people in a house and call that a single family. And then when you have four unrelated people and their kids, I can tell you right off the bat, four is never gonna meet the parking standard, so when you have four adults in the house, our parking is a challenge, but when you have four and their kids, we're starting to move away from a single family and more to a multi-family. Three is a more reasonable number, and most people around the state use three, several cities use two to preserve the single family character and deal with parking issues. The planning commission, when we talked about this in our advisory committee, we met for about three hours, we thought four was a problem because we get these calls about, hey, there's four guys living in a house on such and such street, well, that that's a single family. Neighbors don't seem to understand four unrelated people living in a house, especially a three bedroom house, where one's staying in a dining room, how that's a single family. So three is easier, I think, as we move forward and define what a single family is. So that's a minor change, all the other wording's the same, just the word four was substituted for three. Page two dash ten, group living, this is a big, big deal, and this is a huge liability for us right now. We had a drug and alcohol rehab facility proposal, and we had a halfway house facility recently. We have terms in our book that are so dated that it, again, brings a lot of risk to us. Our halfway house definition says it's a, it's somewhere where you have to be under some kind of home arrest or in car, you know, coming out of jail. Our drug and alcohol rehab, says drug and alcohol rehab. Our group home says it has to be just for rehabilitation, for mental health or something of that nature or physical disability. None of those definitions really work anymore, the term is group living. Group living just means we're not a single family household, we could be juvenile detention, we could be a halfway house, it might be home arrest or not home arrest, it could be a spouse abuse center. There's a lot of things that are group living, and you just want to use, it could be a fraternity or sorority. That's what group living is, as opposed to saying a halfway house is this, or drug and rehab is this. We don't even define where juvenile detention could go, or or, there's all kinds of halfway houses out there, you're not always under home arrest when you're in a halfway house. And there's all kinds of counseling centers. Group living is the industry term, and that's what we'll say if someone comes in and says, hey, I want to do a transition home on one side of town, we'll say, well, that's a group home to us. We're not gonna get into splitting these terms on what's a transition home, and what's a halfway home, and what they're doing, it's just, are you a single family household, or are you group living, and how are we gonna handle parking? And again, we'll figure out where those will go, more than likely, those will go in R3 or R4, but we won't see these things in single family districts or duplex districts. Maybe duplex, but definitely not single family. So that's a change. Page two dash eleven is, it sounds silly, and I know you guys, a lot of you are dog lovers, and I am too. But at this point in time, I am over the dogs, and I'll, and I'll tell you why. Every single week, we get a call that says, hey, so and so's got five dogs, so and so's got eight dogs. And our old ordinance, very dated in my opinion, defines the physical presence of that fourth dog as a kennel. Therefore, it's a violation, therefore, P and Z needs to go out and throw one of the dogs off the property, evict one of the dogs. My opinion is, there's a commercial kennel, and there's a non-commercial kennel. And the planning commission's business is to deal with commercial endeavors in single family neighborhoods. And if there's a commercial business of any kind, we need to deal with it in the single family neighborhood. But the kennel's interesting because we we say three's allowed, four's not allowed. But yet, you could have two people, you could have someone with two dogs, they're breeding dogs. Or someone with zero dogs, it's grooming dogs or boarding dogs. So the problem is, is when is there a commercial business aspect, and when is it just someone has eight dogs as pets, and that's not our business? So this approach is putting definitions forward for the first time that say where the commercial kennel is. And it says a commercial establishment where dogs or other domesticated animals groomed, bred, boarded, trained, or sold with no number. Because again, doesn't matter, if there's one dog, but you're, let's say you own one, but you're grooming dogs every day or boarding dogs, that can be a problem, and we'd come out and say, hey, you need to be zoned commercial or get some kind of approval. The non-commercial kennel's interesting too, because what we want to say is, look, if you have animals, and they occasionally have a litter, we understand, but we don't need to be out there running dogs off the property simply because someone has eight Yorkies, and people don't think someone should have multiple dogs. That issue gets into animal control or local noise ordinances or things of that nature. But as far as planning commission, we're trying to figure out where are their businesses, and when is the use appropriate or not appropriate? So the word, by adding the word commercial, we're gonna be able to figure that out pretty easily. We've got a couple guys that have, one guy had forty dogs, you know, we've been dealing with that. Another one had nine, it's real easy to figure out if they're in the dog business, or they're just a dog, they just own dogs. And we're not gonna go out and police the number of dogs and go out there and count, and, hey, there's eight, five gotta go. But if there's a business, they might all have to go, or you have to get some approval. So that that's a change in these definitions, commercial versus non-commercial, and it's one we need. Three, two dash thirteen, manufactured home, mobile home, I don't want to get into all that. But in the county, we're gonna start to figure out how we get away from these mobile homes. And the mobile home manufacturer's going to a twenty year standard under a HUD code. All that older stuff is gonna be trailer parks only, or eventually just kind of phased out of the county, the real, real old stuff that we are having trouble with out in county. With that, the next page that I think's a kind of a big deal is on two dash seventeen, short term rental. And I want to point this out, this is gonna play out in some different ways here, and it's gonna be something that may work just fine and may backfire on down the road. This is the definition of what we know as Airbnbs, the industry term is short term rentals. This definition is one hundred percent fine, and we don't have a definition currently of short term rentals. This is the industry definition of what they are, it's pretty cookie cutter. Several cities are taking on Airbnbs different ways. Louisville is probably the most progressive thinking, and they're gonna allow Airbnbs in some certain situations in residential neighborhoods, and others, you're gonna need to get an approval. And the splits come with these definitions. Most of the cities in Kentucky are not allowing Airbnbs in neighborhoods, because they can have a negative effect on neighborhoods. And they treat them just like any other overnight accommodation, you have a hotel, motel inn, bed and breakfast. You just throw short term rental on that list of things, people go and step, pay money to spend there and spend the night and move on. What we're gonna do is maybe take a hybrid approach, is the idea, and Jennifer and I have been talking about this. Our definition is good, but we, we're gonna adopt the three types of terms, similar to what Louisville's doing, which is a hosted, unhosted, and dedicated. And the easiest way to think about that, a hosted means you stay on the property, like a bed and breakfast. So when someone comes to your house, you're gonna be there, you're gonna rent, they maybe get a room or a floor or a garage apartment. But you're there, which adds a responsibility element and takes away some of the negative effects that tend to happen with these. The host, unhosted typically occurs with a lot of folks are trying to sell their house, they get a job. Till they're selling it, they're Airbnb, and they've already moved to San Diego or somewhere, and they just Airbnb it till they sell their house. Or they tend to travel and do that on the weekends they're gone, empty nesters, and they Airbnb them all winter or something. But they're not on the property. And then dedicated are the ones that you're never there. I've got a couple friends that have bought homes in Louisville as investments, they've never been in Louisville, they buy them, had a master commissioners, they get a contractor to fix them up, and they Airbnb them because Derby Week's coming. And they outfit them with golf carts, and they got property maintenance people taking care of them. They're truly investments, and they never live there. Those type of Airbnbs, you can imagine, work great around Churchill, around commercial quarters, but you can imagine, they don't fare well in residential neighborhoods. Now, what we have here in Boyle County and in Danville are about thirty, according to Jennifer, Airbnbs. Lot of them are downtown, some of them are up on Waterworks, a couple of them are on Pope Road, some of them are out in the county. And we get all kinds of mixed feedback on, this one's a problem, this one's fine. The catch twenty-two we have here is, it's a viable way to rent rooms and offer people in a tourism based town opportunities, but at the same time, we have to be mindful that a single family dwelling was created with two parking spaces historically and was three bedrooms. And what the problem you run into is when you Airbnb a house and we treat it like a vacation house on Gulf Shores, where two families come here and grab a lake house. What happens is you get five or six cars, you get traffic, you get noise, and the neighbors aren't okay with the idea that, hey, we're a single family neighborhood, why are there eight people next door every weekend of the month? So what we're gonna do again is we're gonna define these and this approach, but we're not gonna figure out where these three are going until later. And I think the approach is gonna be, we're gonna allow the hosted in some places that most towns wouldn't. And the unhosted might need an approval, and the dedicated are definitely gonna need an approval of some kind. The, I think the approach is out in the county, what do we care? You know, if you got five, ten acres, how how can that really be a negative impact? But I think when we get into certain neighborhoods, you know, you some of the, you know, neighborhoods you guys know, these dedicated, single family neighborhoods, you can see where maybe one of these is a problem, and one of them would work and one of them wouldn't work. But this is putting the definition forward, and we just move on from there, and we'll figure out the wheres and whens later. And with that, I'm gonna jump to article three, and I promise I'll go even faster because there's just two things I really want to touch on while I make that three. The first thing is, you know, you guys have had to deal with this issue of public art a bunch. Let me just say from the planning and zoning guy, this article three, to me, is the definition of public art. I mean, this is the most beautiful thirty pages I think I've ever laid eyes on here. It truly is a public document, and I think it's a work of art for real. I mean, you gotta think through what's been happening in this town, you've had to go to almost nine different articles to get everything that we now have in thirty-two pages in one chapter. So when someone calls us up and says, I want to do a variance, I want to do a zone change, I want to do a conditional use permit, how do we put the signs out, who gets the letters, what do you have to submit in an application? All of this is now in one chapter, and it leads off with these great pages on applications, application fees, completeness of application, how we do our published notice, mailed notice, what goes in the letters, how we have the public hearing, how you can reapply at some point, and how the final action works for these approvals. So those first four pages do something that's nowhere in our ordinance right now. Really, you had to go to all these different chapters to figure that out, and you still had to call and say, so explain to me how these letters work, or why do I have to pay this, or, you know, what's the deadline? So now we've got all that in four pages, so regardless of your application, it's all in one chapter. And then I want to point out something on page three dash five, and this is new for our ordinance too. Like I mentioned earlier, the building inspector is a critical part of zoning, because at some point, a building permit's issued, and a CO or certific, certificate of occupancy is issued on the backend. Somewhere between that front end and backend is where the zoning guys need to do their job and do their review. So it's important that we work together as a team. And just to take that one step further, if you guys haven't been by our office, the county judge has moved the building inspector into the planning and zoning suite. So he's there now, because one of the problems we've had is we've had a dual permit community. You've had to get a zoning permit, a building permit, you pay two fees, two different people, fill out the same information, and then the two of us have to work together, and it's not unusual that you have to come to our office, then go to the county, then maybe come back. And interestingly enough, in two and a half weeks, everyone that's come in our office needs us both. And we can sit there together and walk through building, we just had a guy come in to build a garage on, I think, at Boone Trace, somewhere like that. And he was getting a building permit, he needs one from us, we're talking about the size, the zoning rules go to the heart of it, how big, where it can be, what the setbacks are. So what we're doing with this really one and a half page is we're starting to consolidate this process. So we talk about what a building permit is, and what it takes to turn one, get one filed, and then right below it, you see zoning permits. What the planning commission's gonna start doing is getting out of the business of issuing zoning permits for single family dwellings, accessory buildings, or agricultural use. We're gonna let the building inspector handle all of that process, and and you'll pay one fee, one piece of paper, and he'll just slide it across the office, and we'll review it, and we'll put notes on the permit that can go back to the client. And then you walk out with your permit going, hey, I have to be eight foot off the property line. So we're no longer gonna charge those dual fees. Now, that's gonna put a pretty big hit on our budget, getting out of the zoning permit business. But we're gonna stay in for multi-family, commercial, and industrial. As you can imagine, that's where we need to spend more time, you get McDonald's, we're out checking parking spaces, checking landscaping. But a single family dwelling is pretty easy, people come in and pay us three, four, five hundred dollars, and we say be eight foot off the property line and you need two parking spaces. And then holler at the building inspector, and then he takes care of you from there. So if our goal in town is to encourage homeownership, encourage affordable living, affordable housing opportunities, I think getting these permits streamlined and into one, and us staying out of the single family side is gonna be a positive thing because right now, you're paying two fees to two different people, and they're big fees, they're pretty big fees. So the building inspector will just do that, and then we'll work with him. On zoning permits, again, multi-family, industrial, and commercial. And then in the cities of Parable and Junction City, they've, they've said they don't want zoning permits issued at all in their towns. They, they want to keep the bar low for opportunities, and they said, you know, things are pretty easy to figure out. Do we have to push people through all these processes? And one be, come to Danville and fill out paper and pay when, you know, you're in another city. So the way the zoning permits are gonna change is, Danville will do it one way, two small cities another, but everything ties into the the building permit. And then flipping on three, six, this is a total hole in our ordinance right now. We catch every structure that's built through a zoning permit or site development plan currently. But if you tear a building down or build a parking lot with no building, there's no requirement to get any permit today. You could tear a row of buildings down and blacktop it corner to corner to corner. Now, there is a requirement to have landscaping and stripe your parking and put in your spaces for handicap under ADA. But there's not a word in the zoning ordinance that says someone should look at that, or gives us the authority to look at that. So as you can imagine, the parking lots get built, and a bunch of them end up not being paved, they're gravel. They never have landscaping, and they're just eyesore's in our town that move on forward because there was no review or no way to catch those commercial or industrial lots. We've got one fairly large industrial client here right now that gravelled half a field right next to their paved parking lot. It's not striped. The ordinance says we're supposed to have paved parking, but yet we've got a gravel parking lot. And there's no going backwards on it, it's hard to mess with those after. It's hard to mess with those after the fact, but there was no zoning permit required, there was no site plan requirement. It just happens. And you can drive all over town and see these gravel lots or see these parking lots that were paved and there's no landscaping, no striping, they're just there. And so this is for the first time going to catch these paved areas and display areas. And this saying, this is saying that if you're going to build a parking lot for, or add a parking lot, for example, if Walmart bought the field next door and said, we're going to build another 200 parking spaces, this requires them to come in and get a permit. And lets us look at it from potentially drainage with the city or county, depending where we're at, landscape, striping, ADA compliance, and on and on. So that's a new paragraph that hopefully catches these kind of parking lots that come in. And then on the bottom of three, six is where the CO, where the building inspector does his job. And you can see that D at the very bottom of three, six. That's basically saying before a CO can be issued, the zoning guys are going to get out on site and do their job at McDonald's or Starbucks or Cattlemen's. We're going to make sure everything's in compliance with the book before the CO. Because that's another problem and there's an apartment complex here in town where historically once the building's built, the building inspector almost releases the CO saying, hey, it's ready to move in. But we had no parking, we didn't even have parking lots built. The drainage is still not built right. There were people living in the apartments and driving on gravel. So what we're going to try to again, to work with the building inspector is we're going to, the CO is the real stick that we have at the end. If you can't get your CO, you can't move in the building. Well, that gives us an opportunity then to go out and make sure the parking's in the drainage and all those things are done. So we're going to try to work that on the back end of these COs. And with that, I'm going to jump on through and show you one other thing I think is going to be well-received in the community. All the rest of Chapter Three is how we do zoning ordinance or amendments, variances, CUPs, and all the other processes. But when you get to three, 18, the things we call here in town, site development plans. This is an interesting approach here too. Again, I think it's somewhat dated and it's kind of customer service friendliness maybe. What we do here is what we call site plans all the time, every time. So every building that gets built has to go through a site plan approval process. Now, that doesn't sound like a big deal, but that's a full set of engineered plans. That's sometimes on a very simple building. You know, we're building houses bigger than some of these commercial buildings, but yet you have to get a site development plan approval. That's $521, full set of engineered plans, trip to the planning commission. So if you think about that, you had to get a zone change, you had to file a plat, get a zone change, get a site plan approved, get a building permit and a zoning permit. Five steps to build your Starbucks. Five steps to build a dollar store or even the smallest little whatever, a commercial business. What we're doing for the first time, and that starts on the bottom of three, 19, we're putting new thresholds on what triggers site plan submittals. So at three, 19, under that three point, 11.4, we're putting new thresholds in place on when you're going to have to do the full-blown engineered everything approach. So for commercial developments, if you're under 10,000 square foot, what we're saying is go get your building permit. You know, if you're zoned properly highway commercial, what we need to figure out is how many parking spaces you need, how big a sign you're going to have, and go get your building permit. It's pretty easy to work through an eight or 10,000 square foot building. A dollar store, for example, is typically about 9180 square feet. Pretty cookie cutter, pretty easy to review. Why we would make them go through all these extra steps, it just seems like, again, a lot of process. For townhomes, multifamily, again, over 16 units, we need to see you guys. If you're building a fourplex, go get your permit. That's the approach. You know, a duplex, one duplex, two duplexes, a fourplex, two fourplexes. Again, just go get your permit. You're starting to build a big complex, then we need to come in and talk about, because then drainage comes into the play, parking's more critical, access is a bigger deal, landscaping, et cetera. And then for institutional, which again would be big churches, big schools, private schools, again, 50,000's a cap, and for industrial, 50,000. Again, smaller than 50,000, that's pretty cookie cutter stuff. We can review that pretty easy, a big warehouse. But we get over 50,000, 100,000, 200, 300, half million, we probably need to run it through the site plan approval process and get a full set of plans and go from there. With that, I'm going to stop on three and then jump to six real quick. Six is the shortest chapter in the book and always has been. It's only three pages long, two and a half pages, but it's what we call non-conformities. Our current book calls it non-conforming situations. It's very confusing to folks out there because, you know, the issue's non-conforming or grandfathered in. I think most people just say the word grandfather. They come in, a guy came in today, said, am I grandfathered? I said, well, I always say yes, but really then I try to say the term is non-conforming and they're like, I thought it was grandfathered. They really are looking for that in the book and they can't find the word grandfathered. But it's interesting, in the intent statement, I would just want to read this about one sentence or so in, it says, it is the intent of this ordinance to permit these non-conformities to continue until they're removed, but not to encourage their survival. These are things that don't meet the ordinance and they can stay. But the goal is, we eventually want compliance, we want things to look and feel the same. And for the first time, we're breaking non-conforming structures into what's voluntary and involuntary. It's two different things. Act of God, tornado, wind, that's a different situation. If you tear the thing down, and what we do now is we just grandfather it in. If you've got a building that doesn't conform and it goes down, you've got a window to put it right back where it needs to go. There's some situations we think you need to come in compliance with the rules and others that you should be able to go right back on that footprint because that's just a miss, you know, it's a bad day if the wind knocks your mobile home over a few turns. We can put it back even though you don't meet the setbacks. But if you voluntarily tear something down or demo the property, we feel you should have to come in compliance with the rules. Non-conforming uses of lands on, was on the next page. Again, things are out there and I want to point this out on number C because I've been personally in a lawsuit that makes this very complicated, but this is the easiest way to explain C. What we do here is if you have a use on the property, let's say you've been using your house as a body shop and it's zoned residential. Predates a zoning ordinance, you're grandfathered in. Again, you can have that body shop go there forever. We can't stop you. But if, what we historically have said, if the use stops for 12 months, then you've lost your non-conforming rights. Grandfather's left and you've got to come in compliance with the rules. But I've actually been involved in a court case that says, isn't it the use physically stops? Bankruptcies, estate issues, those things still define business activity. So even though we've seen a furniture store board up, be gone, and everyone says, hey, 14 months have gone by, we, we would, before had taken the approach, well, hey, 14 months, grandfather's gone and you've got to come into compliance. We got sued a couple of times and said, hey, there was a bankruptcy going on, there was legal action. That business was still up and running, they just weren't selling furniture. And so therefore, they're still a legal business. So we've got to be careful on what we call the 12-month non-conforming window on use. We've got to look at things like that and you'd be surprised that it's a little grayer than you think. The other thing is we look at use as a building or footprint. And there's been several court cases that define the use as something that's historic where it may not have been there then and it's moved now, but it's still actually considered part of the original use. It was eight acres being used and it's still eight acres being used as opposed to building by building. And then, of course, there's non-conforming lots. And then on six dash three, we deal with repairs, maintenance, structures, and non-conforming signs. So that's everything. I know I took some time, but this is just first phase. The second phase, you guys, is going to be a lot harder. It's going to have signage, it's going to have landscaping, parking, uses, new names, on and on. And I think we've talked about the signage, but city managers pointed out to me, you know, we're under a Supreme Court directive to get the signage fixed. And the simplest rule of thumb is if you have to read the sign to figure out the rules, it's a violation of the Supreme Court directive. So the days of having signs for real estate or campaign or churches do this or warehouses do that, can't do those anymore. The sign, the planning commission basically can say, how big, how tall, how close, how bright? We can't regulate signs by types anymore. So we've got sign ordinance right now that deals with nonprofits get to do this, churches do that, all kinds of different campaign, real estate. We have to neutralize this, that's become content neutral. And again, what was in the court directive, if you have to read the sign to figure out the rules, it's a violation. So we've got to make these things real simple and real generic and that's the approach we're going to try to take. So you can imagine when we put signs forward in the new phase, it's going to stir a lot of people up. If you guys were around when you revised the sign ordinance in 2012, you know how people get ramped up about that. So we're going to take a sensitive approach. One of the things we're going to try to do is have a work session with you guys first before we go to the planning commission and present all the new Article Four and Article Five stuff, get a lot of public comment. We need to talk with the businesses out there. I hear every day that our sign ordinance is fairly strict in Danville. We've got rules that are different in the county than Danville versus Perryville. A lot of the business owners don't understand that. Some of them don't think they're fair. They need some different ways to advertise and they've approached us about, is there some options? For example, everyone loves these new kind of feather flags. They want to do things in limited fashion to advertise special sales. And again, I think the approach is if we value our commercial corridor out there, we know it's under a lot of pressure, especially a lot of these retail stores. They've asked that we give them some things that maybe help them stay in business. So we're going to look at all that and bring it to you guys and let you guys sort through that and then we'll go from there. So that's everything that the planning commission looked at in Phase One. Again, they passed this six to zero. There was no opposition at the hearing. The advisory committee met on this for several months before. And then again, the staff looked at it and I'm not sure, they may have some comments or concerns. And again, you guys may have some questions at this point. If I wanted to walk you through everything I thought was different, and again, everything in the back is being struck through and everything underlying is being added with an effective date of May the 1, if we can get all this thing through all the hearings of all the
A lot of good work here, Steve, appreciate that. And always I need to be educated. Either you or Steve, or I mean, sorry, you or Attorney Dexter, can help me a little bit on your definitions or your articles about kennels? How does that relate to the Boyle County dog ordinance? Not at all or?
No, we've been talking. Again, we've had this situation out in the county and they have an animal control ordinance and it's basically a welfare-style ordinance. The gentleman had the 40-some dogs and our news reporter's here, she got a good scoop with him one day. And again, he was in the dog breeding business. And animal control went out there with us. And then again, a second and third time, they went out and just said, the dogs are being fed, they're, they're healthy, they got water, they got shade, they're on the property. It's 40 dogs. 40 dogs on a two-acre tract amongst a bunch of neighbors. The neighbors were all complaining about the animal waste issue, flies and noise and animal control's approaching that, that's not us. We're about the welfare cruelty issues like that, the dogs are healthy. The zoning guys are saying, well, you're running a business, you can't do that. So he tried to get a zone change and it was denied. The neighbors came out and opposed it. So that leaves that gray area of what do we do when there's too many dogs on a piece of property and what is too many and who takes care of that? So we're defining the commercial element, but the non-commercial side, if someone has nine dogs on a manufactured home lot in the county of a quarter acre, at what point is that a problem and who should address that? That is something that the county has talked about trying to look at and animal control said, we'd be glad to participate, but we're not sure what the answer there is. Again, there are some people that have, well, I'll just, someone I know personally, my wife, we've got four dogs and I'll tell you, it's four too many. But she would have, she said a million times, we'd have 10 dogs if she could have them. I don't understand that, but they eat better than us. But I'm telling you, four dogs is too many right now. So I think we want to get out of getting into that situation. There are people that have pets and they're passionate about them. And again, we go out and get these calls, there's seven dogs on a property, what are we going to do about it?
Be careful, Mr. Hunter, you might wind up in one of those dog houses.
I'm in that doghouse all the time, but it's, it's an RV, so it's not so bad. I actually do have an RV.
Do I hear, do I hear a motion to?
Any questions?
Accept this and then we can go into discussion and questions?
I move that we approve. What's it under, what's it called? The change to the zoning ordinance, I guess?
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion now, questions?
For clarification, just as a zone change amendment, this text amendment would be treated upon your positive recommendation. I would prepare an ordinance that would implement the changes, that would have a first and second reading. So your discussion on it tonight would just be in the form of a recommendation to staff to prepare the necessary documents for you to approve it at your next meeting.
One extra side note, I think it's interesting, on a text amendment as opposed to a zoning map amendment that comes with conditions, you guys typically vote on that as it's brought to you from the planning commission. Text amendments, your book, at the end of the day, this is your ordinance and this becomes the local law. The planning commission's put forward a recommendation, but if you guys wordsmith some stuff, Stephen, you guys change your mind on this paragraph, it's, it's not a problem. We can change that before the first reading, after we have the readings, it'd be a problem. But again, as you guys are reading this, if you see an issue, we can tweak it. I think you all have that authority, it being your zoning ordinance. But the planning commission has put forward a recommendation that you guys may feel differently. Fiscal court, we're there tomorrow, they may say, hey, we want this paragraph back the old way. And that's fine, that doesn't hurt the planning commission's feeling. That happens with text amendments as you move ordinances forward.
May, go ahead, Mr. Aspens.
He's been nice with his comments and I appreciate that. I can remember back when Mrs. Hammond and I served on planning his own and commission together and trying to read some of this over the weekend, it was a lot easier read for me. I just appreciate the work. It's a real good document and I just say, continue and can't wait to see part two, phase two.
Let me ask you a question about, what are you doing in the case where you have found a, you referenced a parking lot that was now gravelled and unlined? What are you doing in those cases?
Well, I mean, in theory, it's a violation because it's not paved or has landscaping. But no permit was issued, no permit was required. It's just a violation and you're kind of chasing your tail at that point, trying to get them to pave it or landscape it with real, you know, I guess there would be a criminal penalty as a violation of the zoning ordinance, $25 to $100. Good luck with the commercial entity trying to make that the threat. And then once the gravel's already down, it's confusing again because someone will say, well, there's gravel over there. How come they have it? Well, they're, they're grandfathered in, you weren't. Theirs is existing, they can keep it, yours is new. In the second phase of the zoning ordinance too, we're going to talk about, I think there's a justification why some bigger industrial clients need gravel. This paving all the time approach, it works and most commercial businesses want it, but I think there needs to be in lieu of gravel option for trucking, storage, some things that maybe happen behind factories that we'd like, what would we care if it's gravel? Well, what you don't want is creep and you want to make sure, you know, the gravel spreads and you get potholes and then you have drainage and erosion problems, but there's a way to control that. So I think we're going to try to put forth a tool on how we would do a gravel in lieu of, it would not be an option for commercial tenants. I think the goal on the bypass and cities, main streets is we want to see attractive parking lots or landscaped and striped and look good. But in industrial segment, you know, if you're in equipment, heavy equipment business or, I mean, they want gravel. So that's something we're going to look at, but it's hard to deal with it after the fact and we get calls about there's a gravel parking lot and it's already down. Then we're trying to figure out historically, there was some, but it grew. So this part was grandfathered in, this part's new.
How about, how about if somebody builds a structure? Don't get a permit.
Well, if their structure comes in, we're looking at parking typically, we're looking at the whole site, but.
No, 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 they didn't come in, they just built it.
Oh, it's just a violation.
And that's what, 25 bucks?
It's a criminal penalty.
Of?
25 to 500. We don't, we don't tend to get a lot of structures that are built, funny enough, because we, we go around, if we see some, you know, footer being pulled, we stop in and, hey, what's going on there? if we see some, you know, footer being pulled, we stop in and, "Hey, what's going on there? You know, you need a building permit." Our building inspector is great about that. We had two, he puts stop work on, he goes out there and shuts them down and tells them, "Come in, get the permit." We do the same thing. So, it's a little easier on the structure, but the gravel, parking lots just sort of happen. They start maybe parking on the grass and it spreads and you look up and it's like, "Wow, now there's three acres of parking out there."
It seems to me this is an area that merits some attention.
Sure.
Seems you could drive a Mack truck through this, no pun intended here, that you could drive a Mack truck through that and then if it's a big enough project, you can find me five hundred, so what?
Yeah. One interesting thing, the city, you guys have made the zoning ordinance a civil fine, but the Planning Commission's code enforcement officer is not a named officer that can issue a civil fine. So, Bridgette and I have talked about this. We have criminal fines in the book, actually, our book says criminal, but the city has made it civil, but the Planning Commission can't go out and issue those citations. We'd have to get one of the city code enforcement people to write the citation. We could go civil, but an easier fix would be to just name the Planning Commission's code enforcement officer as a citation officer of the city, then we can go out and issue a civil fine. And I think that gets people's attention quicker and we file liens and all that. The criminal approach is, and that's what we're going to bring you in Chapter Seven, it's code enforcement. We want to keep our criminal options open and try to pursue civil, but we need to be named as a citation officer.
Is that going to be one of your recommendations?
Yeah.
Okay.
When do you anticipate Part Two being complete? I know that's, you've got a lot to chew on there, so I didn't...
No, we've been working on it. The Advisory Committee hopefully is going to meet the end of this month. We could have it in front of the Planning Commission in April, but again, I think a better approach is I'd like to set up a workshop that bring the public in, maybe do some stuff, possibly on a Saturday with some business owners when we talk about signage, get out and meet with some people and really do a little bit more, get the word out before we get it to the Planning Commission. Because once we go to the public hearing, we're all kind of under that timeline to either pass it or turn it down. So, we're going to take our time and get it where we want it. I'd like to see it in effect by July, but it may be September, it might be October. There's a lot of pieces to that and again, we want to talk with a lot of people about a lot of different issues.
Good.
Any further questions or comments? Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Further discussions? Seeing none, all favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. The, we'll be looking forward to that change, Counselor. We're now at code enforcement. Bridgette, move right along.
Yes. As you can see, we've issued twenty-one business licenses this month and we placed three liens and recovered fifteen. So, our lien list is getting a little lighter for the moment until May, when grass and weeds starts again. We demolished 331 North Fifth Street and we have had eighty-nine inspections, activities and complaints for the month and we've issued fifty-eight parking citations. And Commissioner Searis, you've been asking about the condemned properties in the packet. So, I had our codes officers go through and give you a list of what's been going on with each of those properties, so you would kind of know where we are with those.
And I appreciate it. And if I can just really quickly, just for the folks who are listening, that report you gave me, there was nine listed and the outcomes for the first six are very good. The seven, eight and nine are tied up with people in nursing homes and blah, blah, blah. So, end result is we're doing good.
Yes. Yes.
Anything else, ma'am?
I'll be glad to answer any more questions. If not, that's it.
I was just, oh, go ahead, Ma.
No, you go ahead, Ken.
It's interesting that you concluded these condemned properties with this detail and I appreciate that very much because I've had two people call in the last couple of weeks about the 401 East Main property. So, I noticed it's on the, on the list and the owner intends a total renovation, it says?
Yes, and he is working with our codes officers. They are meeting with him regularly.
Good.
To get those...
I'll pass that along.
Because he owns multiple properties, as you can see on that list.
Commissioner Terry and I attended a meeting Friday and one of the subjects was mass foreclosure auction. You probably know all about that.
I know what the concept is.
Well, it seemed to make sense and so I would encourage you, if it's a more cost-effective way to move forward, look forward to your recommendation on that. And I would say for the public's use, in an unsolicited basis, we've got a lot of very nice comments about your professionalism, your knowledge base, and DeeDee said, "Tell you hello."
Thank you.
And how much you have helped other cities and codes and ABC officers.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
We try to share the knowledge because we ask other cities for knowledge as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Scott, we're going to talk about, a little bit about Parks and Rec, please?
Yes, sir.
Minus a PowerPoint presentation?
Minus a PowerPoint presentation tonight. But before I do so, I wanted just to share with the Commission and with the members, the public in attendance, that we are scheduled to meet next Thursday on March 21st to hear funding requests from community agencies and our joint city-county agencies that we fund every year. And I'll correct my memo that I gave you a little bit prior to the meeting in that our procedure changed last year wherein, we didn't hear from those agencies, community agencies that we were quite familiar with and that had, we'd funded for a number of years, but only heard from those making new requests, new applications for funding in the community agency category. And we heard from all of city-county partner agency requests. So, without objection, I guess those are the directions I'll follow again this year in scheduling those meetings. I would say that we had a total of twenty-four community agencies seeking funding. Two of the agencies we funded last year did not seek funding this year and two new agencies did seek funding. So, I guess among those, that category, we'll hear from two agencies. And then our four city and county agencies did seek continued funding, of course, and will schedule those as well. So, it shouldn't take all day, but it will be an opportunity to discuss what the community agencies hope to achieve with our funding and what we might expect going forward with our joint funding. Now, I'll say, just for the public's knowledge and for yours, and you've got the memo before you and the agencies, or the public does not, you know, the total monies recommended or sought by the community agencies this year is four hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred. Last year, the city funded two oh nine five hundred, so a more than doubling of that request. And then of our four shared agencies, last year in the approved budget, you funded four hundred and two five hundred, four hundred and two thousand five hundred, and the request this year is five hundred and forty-four thousand three ninety. So, collectively, all of those are over a million dollars in funding that's being requested.
So, we've gone from six hundred and twelve thousand dollars up to a million ninety.
That's the request.
Not exactly the trend we said we need to go.
That's the request.
You may have mentioned this, I'd like the Heart of Danville to be included in the presentation, since they're asking for such a large number?
Certainly, we can do that. And particularly, as there's change in that organization, maybe they refocused or have a different approach to how they might plan to provide those services to the community. So, we'll definitely include those.
And if there's any others that you don't want to put in there?
You might recall, Mayor, that last year and I presume this year too, is it was a jointly submitted application. That's kind of a subcategory of the EDP and so probably it will be covered in that presentation as well again this year. I think it was all submitted jointly. Now, we can encourage the Heart to speak for themselves in that request, but it would probably come under that category.
I thought last year, that was when they did everything separately.
They did, there was a separation last year.
There was a separation. It was submitted all together at one time and I think Mr. Lester submitted those again this time in a comprehensive way, but we'll have...
Well, I think since they're asking for a hundred and ten thousand dollars and they're on an interim director basis at this point, I think we need to know what the direction is.
I'm sure they'll be happy to come and explain their request to the Commission. On the other issue, Parks and Recreation, I had intended to make a PowerPoint presentation tonight to cover our joint city-county ordinance with regard to our agreement to enter into a comprehensive provision of Parks and Recreation Services and Facilities and a discussion of that. Some of that was certainly covered by this weekend's newspaper and I decided not to do that tonight, in particular because conversations are continuing between the city, between myself and the county judge executive. I will give Judge Executive Howard Hunt credit for reaching out in terms of saying, "Let's continue to have discussion about how we might develop an agreement that would provide for the goals we each need to try to strive for in the city and the county." So, he communicated to me that he hopes to have conversations with the members of the Fiscal Court in the near future and I want to have some additionally with members of the City Commission. And perhaps in the rough proposal he presented to me today via telephone, we can reach some agreement and get some traction on how we can move Parks and Recreation ahead. I'm really not prepared and I think it would be counterproductive to get into those details prior to each body having those conversations, but I do applaud Judge Hunt for reaching out and suggesting that he was going to take such action and have those conversations.
Any questions for Ron?
Well, I don't want to make this be a part of the City Manager's report, but it's on a topic that I was going to address when it came to Commissioner's comments, so I might as well do it now. I'd like to address the mayor and the rest of the Commission to personally allow this city commissioner to do his own draft of a proposal for Parks and Rec. I think we've had a proposal that's been drafted by staff from both sides, but I'd like to have the chance to put my forty years of experience in Danville with the Parks and Rec Department and to propose a plan of approval for a fiscal court and a city commission of the quote-unquote, a new plan. And my reference would be to go back to the two ordinances, the nineteen ninety ordinance and the nineteen ninety-eight ordinance that we already have on record, and then to use, Mr. Gay just left, but Mr. Gay has referred me to some KRS information. And as I read those four documents, I think I can put together a plan that would be acceptable by the community as well as by the two governing bodies. We have the mechanisms, in my personal opinion, already in place to operate Planting His Own. It's whether or not the two governing bodies are willing to let... Did I say Planting His Own?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to. It's my model, but Planting His Own is a great model. But my plan is to let, to put together a proposal that would allow Parks and Rec to operate Parks and Rec, that there be no division between city and county parks, there be no division between funding and that we have increased membership on the Parks and Rec Board and that we get back to doing the things that are already outlined for us to do. For example, we have a seven-member board, three from the city, three from the county and one that's supposed to be a joint appointment. But it already says in both of our own ordinances that the Commission and the court are both to have been appointing an ad hoc member to be an advisor and observer of what Parks and Rec are doing. The ordinances talk about how they should write their checks, how they should be audited, how they should be reporting to people and all kinds of things that in my opinion, I've been sitting here for eight years and I'm not aware of we've been doing most of the things that are already written in our own documents. So, take, I'd like to take our two documents and take the two KRS statutes that I've been referred to and come up with a proposal to present to this body. And if this body is, said, "Oh, it's okay, let's take a look at it and find a way to present it to fiscal court." I just think we need to have, I consider myself a very neutral person when it comes to Parks and Rec. I support it a thousand percent, but I'm still neutral. And I think, I don't have any axes to grind, I'm not going to call anybody any bad names, I just want to propose it on the table that hopefully we can get some buy-in to.
And I think it's a great offering on your part. Before any proposal comes before this Commission, it needs to be vetted through our city manager.
Yes.
And that's all I would ask.
And the attorney too, though, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to encourage you to do that and speak with the city manager about it. The only groundwork I would lay is that there are perhaps issues that have been negotiated and discussed that you may not even be aware of.
That's, you're probably right about that.
That would have to be included in any type of proposal or movement going forward.
But you know, see, my thinking is that is just what I'm trying to avoid. Because there've been a lot of things that have discussed, obviously been discussed and talked about, but really not as an official body. I was asked today, "Have you heard from anyone about Parks and Rec?" And I said, "Yes." And I couldn't smile because what I've heard has not been very positive. So, I want to put a stop to all the rumors, all the innuendos and just say, "Here's a proposal that's very pointed and if we can agree to it as a body, which have been put from you two guys, then we go forward with it." I think part of the whole Parks and Rec situation that we're in is that we have tried to do this with a new court that hasn't had a chance to wrap their arms around each other. And then we've been sitting here for, for what?
Four years.
Four years together. It seemed like eight years together, but a good time together. We've been, yeah. So, I just want to just, I just want to offer my service to put together something real simple and get back to where it's a fifty-fifty agreement and allow the Parks and Rec Board to do its job.
Have it done by noon tomorrow and then see.
Well, let's see. I can't have it done by noon tomorrow, but I can have it, well, I'll tell you what, I'll have it done this week because I've already started, I'll be honest with you. Somebody had, our new city clerk sent us the two ordinances and I said, "Are you trying to tell me something?" And I figured that somebody was trying to tell me something, so...
Mr. Scott, you want to make a comment?
Yes, sir. I want to thank Commissioner Atkins for his offer and I personally have a high regard for his ability to discuss issues complex and facilitate agreements. In this particular case, Judge Hunt requested in his conversation with me that basically he'd be given time to discuss his ideas with the fiscal court, which certainly he has every right to do as the chief elected officer of the body. So, I guess my thought is that we can work on some continuing ideas that we have and I haven't shared with you, Commissioner, yet, Judge Hunt's ideas, because he only shared those with me this afternoon. But let's see what the county may have to offer and I'll have those discussions with you and that may affect or not your ideas of going forward.
Well, again, I tossed it out there because I wanted you all, as an FYI, I'm going to continue to work on it. I will share it with Mr. Dexter, Mr. Scott and probably with all four of you all individually and continue the process, unless you tell me just, "Don't do it, it's illegal, you can't do it as a Commissioner." Because I just feel like it just, it just needs to be moved. And based on the feedback I get from you all, I am man enough and person enough to go to each individual fiscal court member and say, "Can you and I have a talk about this?" Mr. Kay, what I know, will be willing to sit down with me and talk to me about a proposal that I've put together, no matter how rough and how ragged it might be, and get something started. And we got to get back to that, there's a lack of trust and it's a three-way lack.
We look forward to...
Can I make a comment real quick?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. You know, it's really been great, even though there's been some division and some conversation, that all this attention is coming to our Boyle County, Danville, Boyle County Parks and Rec and really appreciate it. But I think for the staff's view and the board, they need a timeline. So, we need to not keep talking about this, we need to kind of keep this moving or move forward quickly. I don't know how the interview process is going, but I'm sure it affects it somewhat. So, we'll just keep that in mind. That's my comment.
Well, answering your own question, has the interview process started?
Pardon me?
I said, "Has the interview process started?" Well, you see what I'm saying, there's all kind of rumors out there about it, but when I got asked that today, I could not answer that because I've not been told officially whether it has started or not.
Good point.
I could answer the fact that the application then line has expired. I think I did get that part right, but I don't know if it started or not, so a lot of people talking about it.
Thank you, sir.
We had earlier discussion on this, of course, two weeks ago and clarity on the action the city took, City Commission took at that time. And given the complexity of the elements involved, it was clear really that between the city and the government, the city and the county governments, we needed to speak as one voice to the county and the county speak as one voice to... county speak as one voice to us, and that was the goal of that resolution. Now, the city and the county didn't agree on the contents of that resolution, but it did result in a really good conversation, and I think that's continuing. So I would just caution us, as whatever we may come up with individually, we try to speak as a body, because that's how the commission functions.
Yeah, and the only other point I'd add to the conversation, while your attempt to mediate the situation is laudable, just the other perspective is that, you know, two other commissioners have been in that position and have attempted to navigate those waters as well.
Yeah.
And the result, perhaps, on your proposal may be something that hadn't been comprehended in earlier discussions, that could add some shift in the dynamic. However, it's possible that it won't. That's why I think, just as we've talked about at prior retreats, the best formulation of public policy happens with the inspired individual idea vetted through the city manager to maybe look at things in a more complex dynamic, and then to formulate it in a manner which can be presented for public discussion. So your role is right on as a commissioner to do that, I mean, that's what you're charged to do through the city manager. So prior to any discussions being happened with any fiscal court member or judge or anything of that nature, I would just properly say that the framework we've agreed to as a body is to present those ideas for feedback and formulation by your city manager for future presentation and discussion, if it is something that contains parameters that can be accepted on behalf of the city.
Yeah, and my intent to make it known tonight was not to generate an advocate messenger article, but to generate and inform the rest of the commission, because I've not had a chance to even address this with the commission. But I am going to continue with trying to put something together, and I would never take anything to fiscal court or any individual member of fiscal court without making sure the city manager and the city attorney are aware of what I'm doing. That's why, again, that's why I just went public with it, because there are a lot of rumors going on about Parks and Rec. And in 2019, as a city commission, we should not be sitting here talking about Parks and Rec and about the city and the county not getting together, and we don't have a director, and we got some people out there working the rear end zone for the city and county, and we can't get the simplest of things done. And that is to put together agreement and to put together a --
And it's possible, there's some, there's, there are options that haven't been considered, certainly, but to one of your comments, you know, there's people out there working their tails off, and that's true. And that's in one park, which is one component of a complex parks and recreation system. So it's a, it's a, it's a fluid conversation that's very multifaceted and multi-level, but I, listen, we're optimists, and we hope that solution can be found and quickly.
Yeah.
The one constant that we do know is solution needs to be found, and the ball needs to be progressed in a forward motion quickly, with some resolve, in whatever direction that may be.
So if I'm, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
If I may quickly shift to the next item, because it is a point of cooperation with the county, particularly the judge. No, I want to do this, get this out of the way. Don't mind.
Because this is part of the same topic, yeah.
Yeah. I've submitted to you the judge's and my recommendation of David Kamick as the appointed Parks and Rec Board as the city-county joint appointment, who is replacing Cecily Napier, whose term expired on 2019 January, and I think Cecily had been on there quite a while, and I want to thank her for all of her steady work. David served as head baseball coach at Boyle County High School for 12 years, and assistant baseball and basketball coach for 10 years at Danville. His term will expire January 1, 2023. So that's my, that's our joint recommendation, and I'll entertain a motion and a second.
So moved to accept Mr. Kamick?
I will second that, and I think he was actually head baseball coach at Danville.
Daniel, too, yeah.
Both places.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion. I'll call a question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, now we'll move on.
Before we move on real quick, can I ask your permission to answer a question that J.H. has brought up in the community? We have a member of the Parks and Rec Board here, we closed the deadline on resumes, is there any, can we ask her if there's anything happening in terms of interviewing?
Sure.
Joe Marie, sorry to put you on the spot, but --
We are reviewing the resumes at this time. We have submitted some top ones, and we are not currently interviewing.
We'll move into --
I think the public need to know that things are progressing, even though we're trying to settle documents, we're trying to settle wording on this, yeah.
Thank you, sir. We are now in the section called "Hear the Public." This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes and address any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move right on into commissioner comments, if there are any. Mr. Atkins, anything else you want to add?
Well, I just want to say to the, my fellow commissioners, that now that you're aware of the task that I am trying to work on, I would love to have an individual email or phone call or a soda pop break or whatever to hear you say what you'd like to see in this proposal, without violating any rights and privileges of the city manager, that I think we need to keep running the loop. But, you know, there's been some proposals that have, well, they've been, well, there've been some proposals on the table before, I just want to take a different twist and let one of us bring forth a proposal.
I just, I feel it's incumbent on me, again, to just caution you from doing that, is a violation, a potential violation of Open Meetings Act, in that a series of less than quorum members of the Board of Commissioners does in fact constitute a violation per se. So therefore, just by the fact of virtue of you having four separate meetings, it's still a violation of the statute, because the culmination of those meetings is in direct violation and contravention of the statute. So again, the process will be present your ideas to the city manager for review, and then have those formulated where he can, he can have those conversations with other city commissioners, but you yourself, sir, may not.
I appreciate that clarification.
Sure.
All right?
And add to that.
You see the smile on my face?
I want to ask a question. I've sent some ideas to the city manager. Would it be okay for him to share them?
Sure, that is okay, that's the role of the city manager.
I've already done this, I mean, it's ahead of this whole request.
That's right.
So I was going to say to you, ask him, I've already sent him quite a bit.
Yeah. Well, and Mr. Dexter, please keep me in line and order.
Well, I know your intentions are pure and good there, and that's why I'm, it's incumbent upon me to provide that advice, so you don't step in a landmine.
That's right, I appreciate that. Because there's a lot of them out there, aren't there?
Yes, thank you for clarifying that. Thank you for clarifying that, you were making me a little nervous.
Well.
Not intentionally so, but, you know, we just want to make sure we follow the right process.
So what I will do, I will submit my draft thinkings like Commissioner Suri has to the city manager, and ask the city manager to put together some kind of report to the rest of us.
And you should be aware, the city manager has a very well-crafted proposal that may in fact be what you're saying, or would, you know, we could all sit in a circle and sing kumbaya.
Yeah.
So I think, I think today is a late development, and the city manager was ready to make that recommendation, possibly even tonight. However, due to a late development of negotiation, there's been a request to place pause to allow some future conversations to transpire, which may or may not materialize. The point is, yes, I think it is important to reiterate that this has, this has been a very fluid situation, remains so, and that your city manager and the judge and others have been very active in seeking some type of resolution to it. And while I understand the community's need to see something tangible in front of them, such as a hiring of director.
Yes.
You all know, it would be poor, poor policy to hire any individual into a framework that is not yet defined.
That's right.
Or stable.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, to me, this is one of the more important hires we'll do for a while. I think we need to make sure we, to take our time, it's one of those be in a hurry but take your time kind of things, but, so that's kind of where I am, I just, I don't want to rush it.
Yeah. Well, we don't, we want to give the Parks and Rec Board the kind of framework and guidance that they need, and then allow them to do what I quote-unquote, quote-unquote, call their work. See, I just have it. I think we have been very open and communicated among the seven of us and other folks on the staff very well. Please don't do this to me tomorrow, tomorrow. I'm just concerned about whether or not that kind of communication is going on all around this city and this county. And that's as nice as I can say it. If Ron is doing something he's not sharing with us, I don't know about it. But if he is, and we find out about it, we'll address it. If it's going on someplace else in this county, and it's not been addressed by all members of the group, then they have to address it. I'm just trying to, I just feel the need to put it out there. I don't feel comfortable in what's been communicated by different bodies of elected officials in this city and county right now. But I'm just comfortable with all of us. Tap that thing off, girl.
Switching gears on commissioner comments, and being historically bold, we had the 200th anniversary of Center College not too long ago, and we just had an anniversary celebration for the Chamber of Commerce, 100 years, so I think that's historically bold. Something new coming up Saturday happened last year was Heart of Danville and the downtown businesses coming together for the St. Patty's Day crawl, I don't know exactly what it's called, but that's coming up this Saturday, very successful thing, and again, a good sign that our community likes to work together and do some fun things.
Anything else?
The International Rotary International Dinner is also Saturday night, and like the mayor said, he let me tag along, invited me to tag along to a meeting of several different cities on Friday, and I don't know if you wanted to expand on that or not, but the --
I'll let you go ahead.
The agenda topics were very timely, talked about mass foreclosure on condemned properties, recycling and waste management, also, what else did we talk about?
Working as a partner with local county government.
Yes, that was the other big one. Working with your county government.
And a lot of good, a lot of good things, you know, with, with the exception of this Parks and Rec, I think, I think there's, there's a good, there's a good thing here. So now, there is one thing that I think might be worth tossing out here. Recycling is a hot topic, I don't want to preempt anything, but clearly, it's publicly known that the demand for recycled plastic and other things has waned substantially. And one of the things that I got out of it was, they don't want, they don't want glass anymore, none.
Yeah, I've been big on that, but.
So that's a, that's a precursor to a subject that's going to come its our way here in the foreseeable future.
Well, that topic in the foreseeable future, of course, will be the development of bid specifications for our solid waste collection and recycling effort that we hope to develop this summer, early fall, and put out and get a response in preparation for the end of the current contract that'll come up in the following year. So it is a pretty near-term work effort.
I didn't want you to have to take the beating for introducing the topic, so I let somebody else do it. That's all I got. Anything else? Let's move into payment of the bills. Do I hear a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion?
Total being, usually J.H., you're right on top of this.
Eight hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and ten cents.
Eight hundred, seven dollars, ten cents.
Was that like three hundred? I'm sorry.
Seeing no further questions, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next item is Resolution 2019-03-11-01. This is a standard cemetery lot buyback. Don, anything you want to add?
No, we just asked that you approve the resolution to buy back the graves.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval, Resolution 2019-03-11-01.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next is item Resolution 2019-03-11-02. This is the water tower painting bid award. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, mayor commissioners. The city received five bids for this project. This is the water tower on Airport Road, just to the east side of Junction City. The elevated tank, the low bid was CNS out of Hairsburg, 115,650 dollars. Huffman tank, 125,000. Tank Pro, 149,765 dollars. Horizon Brothers, 156,800 dollars, and Sam Estes at 175,570. Staff recommends acceptance of the low bid.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval of Resolution 2019-03-11-02.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion?
Question?
You go.
No, no, no. Well, I was just going to say, for the record, the low bid was the 115,650, I don't know if we made that clear, but that was the low bid. And that, those are people we have worked with before, as I recall.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll, yes, sir?
Yeah. So just a, just a painter, is there any artwork that happens or name that goes on?
The logo that was identified as a lump sum, and I think the allowance was probably 7,000, but it's a word, is simply a word, I think that's what's up there now, and I think the, any adjustment to that would be the revisiting of what it says, either Junction City, or I think it says Junction City now, but it could say Danville also, and pointed in another direction.
Basically, yeah, basically, it's coming back the same, and it's, yeah, and that's, I'm just curious, because I guess if you want to promote your city like some do and like in for sales, you'd have to pay extra to have all those horses run around your water tank, is that right? Okay.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Gentlemen, do we have need for a executive session tonight?
Yes, sir, a very, probably brief one, dealing with personnel matter.
And I think there's one for, I think there was one for, oh, well, what am I trying to say, property acquisition?
Yes, we could also discuss property acquisition.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good use of time.
Okay.
Mr. Cottle, will you do the, do the deed?
I move under duress that we go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61811F, and to talk about the potential property acquisition for which publicity at the present stage might or would likely affect the value per KRS 61811B.
Thank you, that your motion is there, second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, we will move into executive session. Shouldn't we move back into regular session?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Motion's second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, we're in regular session. Miss Speaker?
Staff would ask that you promote a move here and then from part-time to full-time and find a [inaudible].
I just got the [inaudible].
So moved. So moved. You've heard the recommendation with the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Is there any further business to come before us? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned.